President, I think it's going to discuss.
I was really happy with the suggestions we got.
Do you have a book? Yeah, I need one today. I've been studying mine at home so hard that it's just, you know.
As old guys that prepare and bring our book. Anybody need a tablet or pen?
Thank you.
How many of those do you have as well? No, we don't need them back.
Did the House board ever get ahold of you?
Okay, I'm going to, let's see, do you have one of these? No, I changed it. I moved $2,000 over into, because he gets paid out of sewer. Do you want to? Okay, do you want to start passing those around? Let's see.
In a couple of years.
I don't know, I think that's more than we need, but we'll see. I moved something, because it was not coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of the Stormwater. I had to move $2,000 from the general fund over to Stormwater, because that individual is paid out of Stormwater. So.
Is the same thing?
No, no, it was a slight change, $2,000.
Just a slight change. Same concept, different numbers. It's the $2,000 one. Yeah, I was just going through reviewing everything on that this afternoon.
Can I have a 650.3 paper?
No, no, that one's garbage. You only need 653.
Oh, okay.
It's $2,000 off, yeah, yeah. The 655 is the correct one.
Is this Chuck's page?
No, 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 that's the mayor, the administration's.
This is the new one. If you want to turn that one. You want to give it back or give it away?
Okay, is it comparison or?
Cross it off, there's a $2,000 difference. I moved $2,000 out of one poll and then the other.
I don't blink on $2,000.
Right, this right here. This is the General Fund Department, so this is the more current version of it. Yeah.
I stopped looking at numbers when they go below nine, nine, nine.
You know, I think it was corrected that it's actually Thursday, but yeah, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, it is Thursday.
I talked to Barb on the phone, she did not correct me on that, so I need to.
So I just called her on my drive here, and I was like, yeah, Wednesday, great. She's like, no, no, it's Thursday. And I can't, I can't do Thursday.
What's Thursday?
The homelessness memorial, staying. Yep.
Okay, did everybody get a copy?
For the hard times there in the day.
Hi, Ms. Lemus, how you doing?
I'm okay, how are you?
You better.
I'm like, I should have worn a mask, everybody's getting sick.
Maggie has kennel cough, can you believe that?
That's what we're going to be talking about today.
Please announce that I am not contagious. I've had all the tests, I'm just stupid, I'm here because I want to be.
Are we, are we live yet?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, we're live. All right. I know we hadn't done it like this last year, and I'm really excited, I think, with the new rules of council, with the liaisons to direct departments, that I hope that we can have a maybe more efficient way of early engagement on this next year. I think it'll be really nice, but I just want to remind council, it's in our optional charter, that this is in section 418, that the budget shall be, so it's presented to us in November, and then after that, the budget shall be in such form required. Council may reduce any item or items in the mayor's budget by a vote of a majority of the council, but an increase of any item or items therein shall become effective only on an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members of council. And then it goes on to explain how we, how we'll then pass the ordinance. So I just want to remind everyone that that's the expectations on it, that if there's anything you would like to see cut, you'll need to have four votes. If there's anything you'd like to see increased, you need five votes.
Point of order.
Sure.
Will then, after we do this work, will whatever we've done be able to be vetoed when it goes back upstairs?
No, no, that's, we, you know.
You guys don't know what happened?
That's, that's a different, that's a different body, we don't have to pay attention to that.
Different rules.
I know they're different rules.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. All right, let Lori take role here for minutes.
Roll call of the budget session of 12, 19, 20, 23. Mr. Nelson, President Nelson, council members Brzezinski, Faulkner, Flores, Keys, Trup, and Witherspoon.
All right, so I want to, I want to start the, in preparation for this meeting, the mayor had offered proposed changes. Some of those, you know, nothing, there were some conversations after various meetings. Some of these were suggested to us in the process of, of the study sessions. You know, there was reimbursements and grants that CBDG reimbursements that we were told were missing. So this is an update on all of those. I think that, you know, during our study sessions, we made comments about a couple of things, the finance director's salary, we made a comment about that. We made some comments about police overtime. So, so there's, there's a whole list of things here that come out to a change, a net change of 655,000, which I think is more than what the newspaper got me quoted at, so I'm pretty excited about this. I really appreciate the work to tighten up this and to make some of the, the shifts that were, that were missed earlier in the process. Has everyone had a chance, this was emailed to us, I think, I think we've had three iterations of this spreadsheet emailed or handed to us in the last week. Has everyone had a chance to check it over to see the $655,000 difference that the mayor suggested that we change?
Is there anything real in the budget?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Tell me what?
$280,000 from police overtime, which is one of the spots that I thought was a bit egregious during the study session. The rest of it are mostly changes to grants that were not calculated into it.
Police has already raised 500,000?
Yeah, instead of 500, it's only going to be 200.
In reality, the police were, are coming in around 1,750,000 this year. You know, based on our numbers right now, so it's not really increasing by 500,000.
They talked about the 750,000 that we got back.
That is in the 1.5 million that was already in the overtime.
No, I'm not going to hurt the police, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line.
In this budget is 1.5 million of overtime, and in that number is 750,000 worth of grant money. So if we hadn't gotten those grants, it would have been 2.2 million in overtime.
You had a question?
I'll just let them talk for a minute. So, yeah, I did have a question, though. With the additions down on the second half, so are we, we know they're going to be covered by a grant, but why are we, it's putting them in the budget if they're going to be covered by grants?
These particular grants.
Reimbursable grants.
Right, these particular grants will be used to reimburse expenses. So we put both the expenses and the reimbursement in the budget.
Okay, we're an FT for a third code enforcement inspector? That's, that's a general fund item?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
That's pretty much an accessory, isn't it?
They asked for two more, now they're asking for a third one.
So this is the third of both the two additional two that we already added?
Correct. That we are voting to add tomorrow, so all of these things are to be discussed and voted on today.
Okay, and the coordinator of city services under parks. Could someone explain to me exactly what that person would do?
So that person is designed to work with Dave Rocco for the next year or so until he retires, so that there's some succession planning built in, and then that person will take over when Dave retires. He's getting near the end of his time, and we want to make sure that there's time for transition. Does that, does that make sense?
So are we hiring from the outside for this position?
We'll advertise it and see if there's interest. It's not a union position.
Anybody from within the city can also apply for it.
Okay, because if, well, theoretically speaking, if we promote it within, they probably could shadow or do some type of on-the-job training if we were going to hire from within.
If we do that, we'll have to backfill the position that they're in now, though. So, might be a little less, might be.
I'm saying that position is still there with the line item, so it's not like we're backfilling it.
We brought Jackie in in case she wanted to talk about that code enforcement.
I can speak to, am I on here? I can speak to the third property maintenance inspector. As during my, our budget session, I displayed some slides that showed that we were severely understaffed. In comparison to other cities our size in Pennsylvania, we have half the staff needed to run an efficient and progressive code enforcement office. Our department has no administrative or support staff dedicated to only the inspectors. Most cities our size have at least three administrative staff to process paperwork. Our inspectors do all of this on top of being out in the field most of the time. The city has only permitted one electrical, plumbing, and building inspector for the entire city of Erie, and that includes residential and commercial properties. There is no backup, and taking personnel time proves to be very difficult for these staff members. Upon returning from vacation or sick time, they are backlogged with inspections, emails, and paperwork. Without strengthening the capacity of this department, we'll never really fully combat blight, target unregistered rentals, among several other needs. Without increasing staffing and code enforcement, the city will experience further restraint on our tax base, and population will continue to decline. So the third inspector.
Objection.
The third inspector, just to go a little further with the third inspector, this employee would have additional, they're a little different than the other two. This employee would have additional certifications to back up the electrical, plumbing, and building inspectors, and reduce our expense with BIU, the company that we use currently for backup inspections. This employee will reduce property maintenance inspector districts, which will allow the city to strengthen the relationship with the community, become more proactive than reactive, and improve compliance with city ordinances such as quality of life, rental registration group homes, and childcare. So it's a little bit different than the other two that we're proposing.
Question, are you telling me we can get somebody who's a certified electrician, a certified plumber, and a certified builder for $63,000?
No, much less.
We.
None. Our regular electricians make more than that.
That includes the benefits, so the job's in at 40,000 and change, 40,300.
Correct.
So.
Are you asking me that?
So I'm saying, in the city of Erie, we would need a certified electrician to back up our electrician. We would need a certified plumber to back up our plumber. And if this person is not in fact a certified electrician, or a certified plumber, or one of these other trades, they're, they're not going to be able to do the role as you explained it.
Right. Well, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for, to have, to have, they would have additional certifications. So this, they would in fact be able to do those types of inspections.
So you know how long it takes to become a certified plumber or a certified electrician?
Andy, do you want to speak to this at all? Because we've already had, we've already had some discussions internally regarding the makeup of this position, so I feel like Andy could speak better to that.
Yeah, I've talked to a few really good candidates that are asking about this position. One works for a company locally that has certifications, a commercial certification, which is extremely good. The other one is a union electrician, and he's finishing, finishing up his apprenticeship, and, and he works very close with Sam, our electrical inspector, and is extremely confident that this gentleman can pass anything on the electrical side. So that's going to give us two. Plus our other property maintenance inspectors, they have been studying. I got two of them that are going to be ready to take the residential building. And so we've been proactively pushing the inspectors to move that way to get more certifications. For a long time, many years, I've wanted, I'm not a freshman. For many years, I've wanted to do that with the property maintenance inspectors, when they had their residential certifications. And when they. So when they, I'm getting over COVID in the moment. So when they're in their area working, they think, they can do the building inspections, they can do the property maintenance inspections. They're already doing the rooming house, and so, so I'm fairly confident with the crew that we have, the gentleman that we have talked to, one, actually, it is right over here on Seventh Street. He's phenomenal. I've got nothing but high compliments.
So the questions were, they're certified electricians or plumbers?
One of them is. He works for an agency that we already use, but he's looking to move away from that company. I don't want to say anymore.
No, okay, no, I don't want you to.
I'll say something, I'll say something more.
That, at this, at this salary, I don't know if I'd walk away from a $50 an hour job to take a job that pays 15. I don't, I just don't know no one who doesn't.
Well, that's at 70% of the salary.
Yeah.
That, that's, it's not actually.
That number that you're scoffing at is with benefits. The salary for that position is 30.
Contractually, we have to hire AFSCME personnel at 70, if we hire them from the outside, at 70% of the salaries that are current employees. And then after a year, they go up to 80%. After the, the third year, they go to 90, and at four years.
So what's the AFSCME rate for an electrician? Or actually, for an inspector, you'd have to be?
$37,619.40 is what these are budgeted at, 100%. After three years is $53,744.60.
If I may. I think the whole world knows that. You done my call, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, it's cutting the budget, I'm there. These are not the people who got to cut. If you ever call anybody in this whole damn darn city to get something done, that guy behind Lisa gets it done with a skeleton staff. They go into buildings without guns, which is something I fought for too, never knowing what the hell's behind the door. And we're talking chump change, we're, we've got three people running something that Frank ran by himself. How long ago? I'm not gonna, it's Christmas time, so I'm not going to cut people that are working, but I should. These guys don't deserve to be cut, they need to be added on to because they're doing one heck of a job.
So, correct, we've added two persons in the budget. We've added two people in the budget.
No, it's been in the budget, right?
Two's been in the budget, a third one is being suggested now.
In the budget.
I do, on an increase side, I do have concerns about that 30% discount on these guys. That, that is a really, that, that's, that's got to be challenging, finding qualified people, especially, and we've got a list of them. I asked for a list of them, they got two in Public Works, one in Finance, one in Payroll, one in D E C D, one in Engineering, and two in Police, that are all working at that 20 to 30%. You know, that's at a total savings of 124,000 with current staff people, and another 48 with the oncoming people. And I understand some of the people that have been hired, we've had, you've had trouble. And I understand some of the people that have been hired, we've had, you've had trouble finding people that can pass certain tests, get certain certifications.
I have.
It's, you know, as Lisa said, it's contractual. It's in the AFSMI contract, but it is something that we're gonna be revisiting in the new year, especially post-COVID. You know, when you can go and get tired at Walmart, or Target, or Taco Bell for fifteen to eighteen dollars an hour. You know, times have changed, so we're gonna be looking at it.
Do we need to... So I asked what the total number was, that people are being, and I'll say the word loosely. I hesitate to use this word when we're talking about budgets, but underpaid. You know, I say that with some caution. To reverse that policy would be about a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Is that something, you expect to be able to reverse that policy in the next year, or take a look at and talk to AFSMI about it a little bit more?
We'll just have to talk to everybody and see. You know, I don't have an answer right now.
Okay. Do we need to budget for you to be able to hire people at a reasonable rate, or retain some of these people that are working at a thirty or twenty percent discount?
Yeah. I would say yes. I mean, we're handcuffed if we can't.
Talking reality, what's our budget look like without our money? Anybody can answer me and tell me six million?
Between, between the reimbursements and appropriative fund balances, I think we're at seven, right?
In the whole?
Yeah.
Just as long as the general public knows what we're up against. But we don't cut them by the ones that are doing the job out there either.
So we've added several employees and expanded several departments. So, I'm of the same mind as President Nelson, and I know that you have a signed contract, but I, you know, there's a process, but I think it's worth going through the process, you know, to see if they wanna open up, you know, the contract for a negotiation. Because I can't see us retaining people at, with that skill level at this price unless they're gonna work for us at night and work for someone else during the day, or try and, you know, we have a few situations.
Yeah, yeah, no. No, every time I'm at the convention center, I'm looking for all my favorite workers from City Hall to see which ones are, are working their second jobs.
Literally.
And so, in the turn of events, I'm actually for more money. If the person has an electrical certification and/or a plumbing certification, the building inspecting is a lot lower hanging fruit. It's a lot less... That it's a demanding course and takes less time to get that type of certification.
Now, council doesn't negotiate contracts with AFSMI, so, you know, I imagine there was trade-offs on this. Is this something where it would be a challenging precedent if we put it to a vote about this twenty, thirty percent stuff? Would that mess up contract stuff on the execution side of it, the executive branch side of it?
If you guys voted on it?
Yeah.
Ed is on. I mean, it's probably better if we just handle it administratively, but...
But you need the budget allocations to be able to do that well.
So the union, the union and management would have to agree to open up the contract in order to have, add anything or take anything away?
I'm sure the union would be welcoming to that, I would presume. Mr. Betza?
Still talking about that one job with...
Well, there's like nine of them.
Nine jobs for Andy?
Total, in the whole budget.
No, I've done about one for the important one.
Three for him. There's three on that case, and then there's a couple other in Lisa's office and such. Mr. Betza? Do you happen to, you know, he might not be...
Who are you inviting?
He's on. He's zoomed.
Is he there?
Yeah. He might be in...
You're muted.
All right. All right. From, I'd asked for a list of them, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There are a total of eleven people that are currently on discounted rates in AFSMI. Does that sound right? I actually didn't get the list from you.
I believe so, yeah.
So that's two from Public Works, one from Finance, one from Payroll, one from Department Economic Development, one from Engineering, two from Police, and then there would be three from Planning we're looking at. Oh, you know what? Hey, does anyone else have any questions about proposed changes? Before I start moving on.
Well, you're looking at changes. Can anybody explain to me if we're taking a lot of glass out of the garbage pickup, why is our tonnage still going up? I mean, there's a lot of glass being diverted, and yet they're telling us that...
Tech people, Ed cannot unmute.
Pardon me?
Ed Betza cannot unmute.
No. I'm sorry. Just a question I have, because I know that my wife makes me take the darn glass down to the place and drop it off, and there's places in Glenwood, there's places all around the city where people can drop the glass. And glass is heavy, by the way, in case anybody didn't notice. So something's fishy if we're not coming down with our tonnage.
You looked at the tipping numbers?
Yeah, I did. Now, I, I looked at, we looked at the refuse volume from this year, which I wouldn't expect it to change from this year to next year because this glass collection has been going on for the entire year. It's been going on for a little bit longer than that, right? So we're using last year's numbers, but the tipping fee went up. We just ended a four-year contract, and the tipping fee went up. So I just, I double-checked, I went through line by line on that refuse budget with Chuck Zisk, and we rechecked the tipping fee, and I'm confident in that number. The only costs that went up significantly in the refuse department were the tipping fee and the labor, which is contractual. We kept everything else almost the same as last year. Oh, and the fuel, which we have no control over. So the only things that have increased in that budget are the things we have no control over. There is, in my mind, no way that we can avoid an increase because our costs have gone up every year. We've been through this inflationary period where in the last three years, I think the inflation rate on top, each year on top of the last, was in the neighborhood of sixteen and a half percent. And we've increased our rates by much smaller than that.
That's why I'm so concerned about the poor families. You know, they lose almost nine thousand dollars of affordability. The same dollar pays that much less this year, and we're not paying attention to them.
Well, the only way we can actually decrease their refuse rate is to provide less service because we have to cut our expenses in order to decrease the rate. And the only way to cut our expenses, as I just explained to you, there's nothing that's not that we, that's within our control that we can cut unless we take the large item pickup away, or...
I think last time we talked about...
Cut the number of containers that we're picking up.
Maybe doing, so, so once we get our containers out, our recyclable containers, I think most households can hold on to them for two weeks. You know, the city's providing large, most people don't have that many recyclables in a week. And so I think that, you know, bi-weekly recycling is something that can be looked at.
If you're looking, if you're thinking about privatization, you need to look at the communities around us that have used private haulers and what their rates are, and I think we have that in our council name.
We have a city which makes it look more difficult to pick up.
Do you wanna bring that up, Victoria, if you can find that? And as long as...
I got through college on a backup carpet truck here in the city, so I know what it's all about.
As long as we're not, as long as the city is in the black, it's not going to change their rate.
We're in a black because we keep on raising the fees.
Right, but...
Which is what the people are upset about in the first place.
There's, there's no...
Not your fault, Lisa, no.
It's not, it's not hurting the residents for us to keep this...
And estimate it, if we did every other week recycle and pick up.
Well, that's something that we would have to sit down and estimate, yeah. And that would take a little bit of...
That sounds like something we'd have to do next, you know. It sounds like, it sounds like that's a decision that'd be tough to make tonight.
Yeah, I mean, that might involve different types of trucks and...
We're giving out containers that, you know, sixty gallons or whatever, you know, that hopefully nobody's filling that up in a week.
We're going to be, we got a grant?
Yeah, so we're giving out recyclable containers.
So we... All right, so we're in the low end.
By the way, Ed, I worked for ten years for one of the waste haulers that does private contracts.
Mr. Perretta was a very good man for me. I worked hard, but definitely...
Just to keep things moving along on vote stuff, does anyone have any questions about the proposed changes that the administration gave us? I would love to, I would love to just vote this up, or, you know, if there's not, if we can exhaust the questions and then just vote. Does anyone have any further questions about this? Is there anything that needs separated?
Can we hold on this thing?
Because, yeah, 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 yeah. These are amendments we're voting on before tomorrow's ordinance, so...
Let's get a clarification, though, with Andy. All three jobs are back in the pot for him, for the home inspection?
This includes all three.
This would be all three, and we can, we can work on that in a second vote. We can vote on the first and the second ones if that's the case.
The first two we added in the preliminary budget, and the third one's on here.
All right.
Is the police involved in policing there?
There is police. There's a reduction of two-hundred-and-eighty thousand to their overtime, which the police chief said, he emailed us today. He said he understood that, and he would ask us not to go any further than two-hundred-and-eighty, but it does seem that that's an agreeable position for him.
Okay, what about fire?
There's nothing for fire. An adjustment for deferred comp for thirty-eight thousand. That's it. And that's an increase.
Any positions cut again?
Nothing in this involves cutting positions. There are some addition positions by grants. He, it was in this as a proposal by the mayor's office, and then, and then he emailed us today with all of his stats, and he added that little paragraph at the end and said, you know, that he thought that was a reasonable spot.
When we put the budget together, we had one point five million in overtime, and if we extrapolated that from October thirtieth to December and added a three percent increase, we came up to two million dollars. Now, just...
Didn't include some of the reimbursements is what we forgot in that study.
Well, no, the reimbursements were embedded in the one point five million, so that wasn't exactly what happened. But you've got timing differences, and look, we have more data now, and we recalculated it recently and determined that we can make like one million, seven fifty this year, or seven sixty, possibly. So if you move it, if you cut it to one point seven million, we're going to have to do some belt tightening because there's no three percent increase in there, and we're a little bit shy of what we did this year. But they're gonna work on it.
All right. No, you satisfied with that answer?
Yes.
All right. Is there any other questions about this? And it looks like Betza's available, so, but we can talk to him after this portion because he doesn't have to be asked.
I could have a question. Okay, so, and I understand it's grant funding primarily, but we have the five hundred thousand for the PAL grant. Is this contractual that they get paid their overtime rate while they're serving as a PAL?
The people that this grant is paying for are full-time pal, they're full-time on PAL. And we had them in the budget already, and their wages were already in the budget, they're existing police officers, so we're just getting this revenue to cover them.
Okay, you said, I know we had one full-time officer in PAL, right?
This, so we applied...
We have more?
We applied for a grant to cover the cost of two people this year, this coming year, to work full-time in PAL. We're not backfilling those positions, so it's gonna cover the two existing officers in the budget, which is why it wasn't initially in here because we didn't have confirmation that we were gonna get the grant until we received it. So that's gonna cover their salaries, not overtime.
That's exciting. Okay.
And then it'll allow us to hire a civilian coordinator at a very, you know, at a part-time salary just to help with paperwork and that kind of thing, so that we don't have police officers doing paperwork. Yeah, they can just spend time with the kids in the program.
We have made no decisions as far as where we're gonna put PAL yet?
Not yet, no.
Do you need to move to a separate... Do you need a motion to accept?
All right, so, yeah, we'll need a motion to accept it because there's increases and decreases. We would need five votes for the increases, but I think we can just vote on this all together? All right, so would you like to make, all right, second?
Second.
Anyone in favor? Everyone in favor?
Separation. Let's do additions, and then let's do subtractions.
Okay, all right. Does everybody...
Which one do you want first?
Okay, so in the top, that's all the, some of those are tied together, though. A lot of the additions are decreases on the other side. You know what I mean? So... So if you wanna vote, if you wanna separate...
That's okay, we can, we can take them.
I feel confident we got five votes on this, if anyone wants to vote against. All right.
So, hey, before we vote on this, I have a question for Lisa. Could you tell us how many full-time employees we have that are being paid solely by ARP money minus the police?
Six?
Lisa, you don't know that by heart?
Actually, I don't. Can you pull up that budget?
Yeah, they're on the stack.
Council document.
It's the, it's the page that has the people's names in there, that they didn't put the positions, they put the names. Oh, they fixed that part, don't worry.
Okay, non-police there at the bottom?
One, two, three, six.
No, they're not completely funded by ARP. There's percentages.
More than sixty percent. Let's go with that.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah.
So, I may or may not be here next year, but the question would be that, okay, you know, we have six people who are being paid for solely with ARP, we're adding additional headcount, and that's gonna impact our true, what they call it, our structural deficit, so...
We're, just, I wanna clarify a little something. Some of those employees were existing employees who took on additional responsibilities to administer ARP funding or to, you know, take over grant administration. Lisa and Jackie both were doing ARP work. Victoria's doing ARP work. But Victoria, for instance, Victoria Lewick, not Victoria.
Other Victoria. I thought they were the same person.
New Victoria.
Victoria too.
Replaced Jennifer Hoffman. So while she's partially being paid by ARP funding to administer that, she was, she was already, she was already a city employee doing economic development work.
So it helped our bottom line for a season.
So it's helping our bottom line. We're using it sort of as a revenue replacement to compensate us for administering the ARP funding, but she wasn't hired with ARP funds to do it. Do you understand what I'm saying? Sorry.
They moved people around.
And if you look at the job descriptions of all these people, they're all working with grants and trying to bring, and economic development, trying to bring more jobs and money into Erie.
All right. I would love to move these six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue adjustments. And we already had a motion and a second. Can, can we vote on that? All right, Lori, do you wanna call those out? Alright, Laurie, do you wanna call those out?
Sure, sponsored by council member Witherspoon, seconded by council member Brzezinski. That city council vote on the proposed changes to the preliminary budget made by the administration as amended. Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Council member Faulkner?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Trum?
Yes.
Witherspoon?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes. Alright.
Motion passes, please, seven, eight, zero.
Mr. Betza, maybe you can speak to the issues of the thirty percent reduction. I know we do this for police and fire as well, but I feel like that's not been to the detriment of hiring the positions as much. Maybe can you, you can speak to the AFSCME contracts and this, the thirty percent reduction that they start with, and what that would do if we address it here in this budget?
So, every contract has a wage progression. Some of them are different. To the extent that we feel that a wage progression is problematic for us, we certainly have the ability to meet with the end and to discuss possibly changing that. But that would be an executive function from your position. I think you accurately pointed out, this is also a funding issue if we were to do it. I don't have any objection if you were to anticipate an increase in funding, it doesn't change the contract, but it's allowed the parties to have a discussion to change contracts.
Okay, thank you. From the information I have, that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar increase. Now, obviously, with them having a contract, or a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase, with them having a contract, that would be a, you know, that'd be up to the administration to try to figure out where the thirty percent reduction is necessary, or where you'd wanna boost that up to retain them. But I'd like to give you guys enough money to be able to do that. I think that's, especially when I'm looking at these code enforcement officers coming in it. I mean, even before this stuff, inflation, I made that money bartended twenty hours a week. I mean, this is, and that was ten years ago. I think, I think to be competitive, this is gonna be challenging. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion. It ends up being a hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eighty-eight cents is the numbers I have to work off of. Does that sound accurate, Lisa, still?
Could you read off what departments the people were in again?
Yeah, this is, Public Works has two. They're both maintenance mechanics. Finance has a senior clerk and accountant. Payroll has a payroll clerk. DECD has an executive secretary. Engineering has a CAD tech. Police have two CSOs.
What are those?
I don't know.
CSO? They're the call-takers.
They what?
They take the non-emergency calls.
Oh, okay.
And then Planning has three code enforcement officers. Now, this is not me making a motion to give all these people raises instantly, but in the cases where you guys are seeing that thirty percent reduction and struggling with AFSCME retention, and I at least want you guys to have the allocations to address it. Does anyone have any questions about what I'm proposing here?
Could you give that full amount again, please?
The amount that I have that would bring all of these seventy percent up numbers, and I just have the salaries. Would that affect their deferred comp and...
If they're on the deferred comp and the FICA.
Alright, so will you be able to tighten that up by morning, you know, in the morning on that? Okay, so this should come out to south of two hundred thousand, one sixty-three, nine thirty... I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents is just the wages. So it doesn't affect their deferred comp, and that'd be it. Oh, and FICA?
Ten percent.
Yeah.
If you add the total amount.
And this is not giving them an instant raise, it's just giving the administration enough resources. This is an increase, so it would take a supermajority. So we'll see if it happens. I'll make that motion. Does anyone wanna second me on this?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Motion by President Nelson, seconded by council member Flores, that two hundred thousand dollars, including one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents in wages increased to the general fund budget?
Yeah, operating budget, yeah.
Ms. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Ms. Faulkner?
Yes.
Council member Flores?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Trum?
Yes.
Witherspoon?
Yes.
And President Nelson?
Yes.
Alright, he's got two hundred.
Eight, seven, eight, zero.
They just gave a six hundred and fifty-five cut, so...
So now we're back, now we're back to that five hundred, Chuck, that was in the paper.
Exactly, less, less. We're at less than that. I got some ideas.
So how do we have adjusted?
Yes.
New ordinance for us?
Yeah, no, the budget's kind of a fickle thing. It might not be exactly matching these numbers. It might not...
Yep.
It might, there, I need a little bit of wiggle room, but it'd be...
The motion had up to two hundred thousand on that, so that should be...
Right, that should give me what I need, so...
Yep.
I thought you were massage in either the garbage or the refuse.
Let's, let's, let's keep working on the general budget before we get to the enterprise funds. Do we have other general budget suggestions or concerns?
For general fund?
Yeah.
Yes.
The money we're giving to the county for the people that were supposed to be helped in the city. Is that two million, Michael? What was that?
Five million.
The redevelopment authority you're talking about? The redevelopment authority?
Yeah, the money. It's our money for our people, and we're gonna give it to them so they can play around on Twelfth and Cherry again?
I don't believe that's in this budget.
It's not, it's not...
That's ARP money.
It's ARP funding that we awarded to the redevelopment authority.
That money is already left...
But then you award them that money for a specific purpose in the city?
To help our people.
Alright, did you ever...
The Quinte and the EMI, yeah.
The money for housing ended up being lent to...
Oh, you're talking about...
For the two-year loan on a...
That's just a loan.
Yep.
Yeah. It's actually a really good deal because it enables Chris to move forward more quickly on EMI. You create jobs in that location, and then he'll be paying that money back to the redevelopment authority with interest, but it's interest at a lower rate than he would have to pay to flow to bond or take out a loan. So it's good for the city's redevelopment authority, and it's good for the county's redevelopment authority. It's good for the city and the residents.
But does that not defer the access to home repair funds for another two years?
No, because they still have enough funding that they're loaning out and granting out, and they can't move that fast to get it all out the door at the same time. It's a good way for them to phase it in and get the money spent in the amount of time that it needs to be spent in, and then get it back with interest.
It wasn't, but this is great.
Given that that's not particular to this budget...
We entered into a deal with the redevelopment authority, which has the programing rules, which include that if they were not gonna do as asked, that the city would have the right to ask them to return the money. Or if they wanted to program it some other way, I guess they could come back to the city and ask if it was gonna be outside of the contract. I think that even though they're an autonomous authority, that if they changed their mind or they're unable to execute, they should be coming back to city council and saying, hey, you know, we would now like to do this, this, or this with the money, and council should approve or disapprove the changes.
But, yeah, they're still gonna do, they're still gonna do what they said they were gonna do initially. This is just a temporary loan.
I know we keep hearing that we can't get rid of the funds fast enough. Have we looked into offering technical support so that the residents of the city can have some type of assistance, walking them through the application, showing them what kind of paperwork that they might need to go along with these applications? Because I've spoken to people that say that they go through, they get the paperwork, and then once they start flipping through the pages, they feel like they don't have the capacity to accomplish it. And then we have the end of the year, and we're recycling the funds again, and it's not actually getting to the community. So are we looking into that?
We are, yes. Our Love Your Block staffers have been working to help folks that they've met through the Love Your Block program that needed more work than we could provide through the Love Your Block program. But also, the Community Liaison and the New American Liaison, when we bring them on, the plan is to make them much more community outreach, so that they're going out, knocking on doors, helping people complete those applications, because they are, and you need to submit a lot of information. And sometimes that's really difficult to navigate. And there are a lot of people, I mean, what we found out through Love Your Block was, people didn't even know we had the funding available to apply for in the first place. So it's really important that we're knocking on our doors, we're dropping off the information, and then helping people access the resources.
By not knowing people, we actually did help.
I don't have that number off the top of my head, yeah. I can find out how far along we are.
That's what it's all about, helping our people.
We also allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the East and West Bay front to hire somebody to do exactly what Jasmine has said, and I, and if it's not being done...
It's being done, but it's being done in those two neighborhoods. So, you know, we have, you know, a whole city that needs that support too.
So were they successful in those two neighborhoods?
Yes, I know that they have been helping their residents access funding.
Well, can you let us, give us an update on how many people we've ever helped this year? I mean, it would be nice just to have a reference, that way hopefully next year we can aim for double it, you know? Have an incentive to work towards getting the funds to the community.
The one thing is, I want...
Yeah, have like a workshop and just do.
The funds to be available, we know the need is available, and I don't believe it's the prudent way to do it, to loan it to somebody and then say it's gonna trickle back into our community when some of us were on that panel or not, and some of us were not. But, you know, we outlined what we wanted the money to go to, and we stand behind those causes. You know, the primary, if our primary problem is blight, our primary focus should be, how do we get this money to the people? How do we get their house repaired? How do we mitigate blight? How do we work with code enforcement and referrals? That's a whole system of referral right there. Every time they go out on a call, they can say, hey, I went to a call, we gave them a ticket, da-da-da, straight to the pot of money. There's no reason why these things are not working.
Okay.
I had a crazy situation the other day, too. I asked somebody in the forest, I won't mention names, what's going on in Twelfth and Green Garden? People are telling me that it looks like a war zone. Nothing's been done. You know what they told me? Contact the people who bought it. Hello, we gave them thirty-year loan for whatever at one percent, and they're doing nothing there?
I think they're planning. They're plan, it's in motion.
Yeah, we need a good, very slow motion, Randy.
Well, deals take time, bringing jobs and...
So let them bring them down here and hold their feet to the fire. It's all going right.
Alright.
General fund?
Yeah.
Okay. I have two proposed cuts I'd like to explore and bring up to council. So page twenty-two. I'm really excited about where things are going with Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources. I think our director's doing a great job there. And I come at this really under the vantage point of having worked as a consultant, having had my own consulting business, and also working for a neighborhood organization that does a lot of housing work. I'm excited about the idea of a comprehensive housing strategy. I do not love the hundred thousand dollar ticket for that, so this is item forty-four-one for professional services.
Twenty-two.
Page sixty-two.
No, it's still in here.
Is it page twenty-two?
You have a second on that one already, Susan.
So I have already been working with, for example, Mercyhurst University's Public Health Department. They're engaging their students and doing a needs assessment. I would love to see this as a collaborative community effort, instead of a hundred thousand dollars going to an outside consultant. I know for myself, if, when I had my own consulting business in San Francisco, so much higher rates, I could have done that study in about four to six months' time with half that much money. And so I just, I just don't wanna see these dollars go to a Cleveland, Cincinnati, Pittsburgh-based consulting firm, Harrisburg-based consulting firm, when we already have robust neighborhood organizations, strong community centers, and great universities who could be partners in this effort, so it's truly a community housing plan.
Can I check one thing with this? Does she have the right page number? I had that, I had the same concern down, but I had it on page sixty-two on line item forty-four-one with professional services under general government.
I believe it's in the, on page twenty-two, because if you look at the twenty-three budget, it was twenty thousand, and the twenty-four budget's a hundred and twenty thousand. So...
Alright, sorry, thank you.
Let's not forget the real, realtor board has a good comment, too.
Right, like, this could be an opportunity to bring people together to not outsource all of that, when the dollars, like Michael has said, needs to be reinvested into the community, not into a consulting firm. So I would like to suggest cutting that by fifty thousand dollars, challenging the department to do that comprehensive study with fifty thousand dollars through community partnerships instead of the allocated hundred thousand dollars.
I'd also like to point out, when you're offering answers to that, the Planning Commission last month during Thanksgiving break, they went through, I think it was five resolutions, that when you look at the house, because I read a bunch of housing plans just to see what those look like. The things that the Planning Commission suggested are basically like the first half of every housing plan I've seen. They're all talking about ADUs, they're talking about, everything that the Planning Commission was talking, looked like, came straight out of their most recent housing plans.
Yes, like, our problems are not unique. I think the Planning Commission is already aware of what needs to happen. There's going to be some ordinances that I'm sure council, as we have addressed a lot of housing issues this year, will be addressing next year, but I just, I can't stomach putting a hundred thousand dollars into a consulting firm for that study.
So, council approves contracts. So, as you go into, I would leave the hundred thousand dollars in the budget, and I would, you know, ask this council's plus the additional members to work on a comprehensive solution with local partners, because it's still gonna cost something for somebody to do the work. If there's somebody capable of doing it, or wanna do it in a collaboration, then I think that's, that's the way to go. But I would...
We did that diversion study last year for free with Penn State Barron regarding food, compost, and glass.
And we'll put in a revenue replacement at the end of the year if we don't use it, right?
I would just comment, I'm not opposed to reducing it to the fifty. We have been working with Infinite Erie and the delivery team on housing, and are actually hoping that we'll find a match for that. We put in the hundred just in case. But we have all the neighborhood groups working together, the redevelopment authority, the housing authority, HANDS. Everybody is on the same page with the need to create a comprehensive housing strategy, and so I think, I think we'll be able to make it happen. I just, we put in the hundred just in case, but...
Well, I'll second the fifty, if that's the, if that's the number.
So it would be a reduction of line item forty-four-one.
Relative position?
Right, right.
Yes, yes. So it'd be a reduction of line forty-four-one from a hundred and twenty thousand to seventy thousand.
Alright, I'll be your second.
See if I get this right. A motion by council member Susanna Faulkner, seconded by council president Chuck Nelson, that line forty-four-one, the comprehensive housing strategy consultant amount from one hundred and twenty thousand to seventy thousand would be a reduction.
So this only needs a simple majority?
A reduction to specifically fifty thousand?
Yes, it's the full professional services line.
A reduction of fifty-five.
Call for the vote, then.
Yep.
Councilmember Brzezinski, Faulkner?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Trum? Witherspoon?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We have to keep in mind, because we put a hundred thousand or a million in a line item, it doesn't mean that... doesn't mean that we contract with a company for that amount, because they may come in very close to that, and we can say no.
Yes.
Yes.
I have one additional suggestion for a cut. Page 29, Office of Personnel, HR, specifically at the very bottom of the roster, casual labor. I have concern over that and the hiring of an intern. It was something that there wasn't necessarily concrete evidence of, as well as the fact that the HR assistant, the first, the first role, the first position there, was just hired, was just brought on in 2023.
Yeah, replacing casual labor.
Replacing casual labor, so I propose a cut to 4011 salaries by $15,000, eliminating the casual labor.
I'll second that one.
And that was for...
The Human Resources Department and their personnel, the last line item for casual labor, $15,000.
So what was the reason for the casual labor, again?
That was in the budget two years ago. Then they hired, they, that was when Laney was an intern, and then they hired her on full-time and got rid of casual labor. And now they're looking to bring it back on with casual labor, although Laney's still here.
Well, I can give you a little bit of context. What happened was, an employee who's no longer with the city hired an intern before leaving, and without going through the process, the student showed up expecting a job, and so we created a job for that student, and then we paid for it out of the mayor's office, because we had enough funding in our summer help, in our, whatever it's called, in our summer help, we had enough funding, so the person helped out in planning and in HR while she completed her internship. And then I think it was just, well, we'll just keep, we'll keep it in the HR budget, as opposed to taking it out of the mayor's budget, but I've talked to the HR director, and she's fine with that being cut, so.
Okay.
What does the casual labor do with the job description?
It's just a part-time internship, preferably if you could find a student who's working in HR, that could help with paperwork, you know, basic tasks, that would actually give them some experiential learning, too, as part of their education, but she's fine with it being cut, so.
I would love to see that title out of there, and internship, and you tell me that, I know what it's, it's about helping a student.
Yeah.
I recall Eunice had mentioned that it would have been an individual who would have been spending time in HR and with the mayor's administration, correct?
Uh, it was planning.
Oh, okay.
And what she, she's going to be looking into, she reached out to the universities about getting interns that would get credit, as opposed to having to be paid, so that's another avenue that she's exploring.
So, while I'm for, definitely, I would, I think if we could define this into an internship, that I could still support it.
Right.
I don't want us taking Johnny off the street and, and running him for half the year, and...
Now it is.
Yeah, so if we could define this as an internship...
It would look better on paper.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we call it, we call it casual labor.
And I will also say that it'd also be great if, you know, if we could really open our eyes up, to make sure we get a diverse candidate, and that would make it even better.
Yeah, the candidate that we had was an international student, actually, so that was great, too. I mean, you know, we went from...
They make more than council. Their interns, they make more than council. Twice as much.
Well, they're probably putting in more hours, but I'm not sure.
It depends.
Yeah, it depends on some weeks, but, you know, I, I think it's good to pay the interns.
Yeah.
But, but if they can at least get three credits out of it, that's a big expense, too, so.
Because even if you get them with credit, you can pay them a stipend, you might get two.
Yeah.
All right, I'd love to keep the votes moving, can, do we have much more discussion on, so there's a proposal to cut that 15,000, there's a second, can we, can we, is everybody ready to vote on that?
Conversation, if we could amend it to an internship, I would ask Ms. Faulkner if she would reverse her, her line item cut.
I think that's gonna, I refuse at this point to do that, I think that would be a further conversation with, with the director, with Eunice. She was okay with, with the cut. If that is something they want to propose in 2024 and formalize an internship program, I think that's something to look at, but at this point, I stand by the original motion.
Yeah, all right, let's vote on it.
Motion on the floor to eliminate $15,000 from casual labor from page 29 in the HR Office of Personnel to zero. Motion by council member Faulkner, seconded by Ms. Flores. Voting on the resolution, Ms., council member Brzezinski.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Keys.
No.
Tru.
Yes.
Witherspoon.
No.
President Nelson.
Yes.
Motion passes, yeas, fives, nays, twos.
All right.
Now, when your kids need a job in the summertime, Chuck, yours is closest to college.
This is not a seasonal summer job. This is not that.
I'm going to send them on the garbage truck like Brzezinski was.
Yeah.
Buy them a lawnmower, let them cut grass, pay you money.
All right.
All right, I think that takes us back over to your, over your 500,000 threshold.
Sweet, sweet.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any other cuts?
I am not going to fight the fee increases, but I want everybody to please explain to the general public why they're getting screwed over by it again. It's wrong, I will say it's wrong forever. I can show you where to get money, but that's not my job, I'm not going to do that to the administration. I just vehemently dislike that, and I...
I'd love to talk, we can, I'd love to talk about the enterprise funds more, I mean, like, I'd like, I think there's some discussion that we could have there. I'd love to get through the general fund first, and then, and then really get there. I, I think there's some, some conversation worth having. Do we have other stuff for the general funds that, that anyone's proposing?
I mean, I'm not going to propose it right now, but I just want to make a comment. I know that last year we had ended up making the Communications Department into its own separate department, and that was the first year that we introduced the Communications Director, and that's a $72,000 position, and that's currently being paid for with ARP funds?
No, no, it's general funds.
Oh, it's general funds?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's going to be a long-term position, until we can afford it.
Right.
Same with Immigration and Refugee Liaison, no, Refugee Liaison, and then Community Affairs Office.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those positions are going to probably be on the chopping block in the future, if we do not find funds.
It's Christmas time, we're obviously beyond it.
Those were positions before, though.
You said...
New American Liaison and the Community Liaison.
Yeah, but they were under the mayor's administration, you guys moved those over to a separate department under Office of Communications.
To, yeah, because they do outreach.
Do we have Communications Department, President?
Not by legislation. I'll suggest, with the two empty positions right now, with the, with the Community Affairs Officer and the New American Liaison both being at 45,000, their benefits being 24,000, $48, I will suggest cutting one of those positions.
To get welcoming certified, you have to have a full-time New American Liaison, so...
Well, then I'll suggest the Community Affairs Officer.
You're going to eliminate a Community, a Community Liaison?
I'll put it to a vote. I think at this point, we have...
That's going to cut out a whole, a whole bunch of outreach that we can do.
I think at this point, there's been a clear prioritization of adding more and more to the communication side and the outreach side, to the point that now we have nine people doing what was in former administrations and in other cities, at about four people, so...
How's that?
No, 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 so, so the, the positions that were in existence in the mayor's office before Shember's administration.
The New American Liaison and the Community Liaison.
And then comparing that to other comparable cities, Altoona, Scranton, you know, Allentown, Reading, there, we do have a more robust communications than any of the rest of them. With the outreach liaisons, we do have a much more robust system.
I'd have to look at their staffing to see, I mean, they could have different...
Well, you know, we have a more robust system than the administration that you came in, you know, like, you've, you've added since we started in these areas.
We were looking at best practices to what they do in other communities to get resources and services out to residents.
Yeah.
And the need is for community outreach, because people don't know about the resources that are available, and they can't access them.
Yeah.
So, question was, you said you have to have a New American to be what?
Welcoming.
Have, to be welcoming certified, that was something that we worked on in 2018 and 2019, and we were able to achieve it, but one of the requirements is that you have a full-time staffer who's working on immigrant and refugee relations.
You also should be cognizant of whoever's making this proposal, that, you know, also that upwards of one-third of this city are Black and Brown people, and to, and to pick one or the other, I think is an injustice to both.
I mean, I would, I would suggest making a shared position, as both of them are vacant and have been for the last six, seven months.
How long have they been posted online, though?
It's not posted right now, we're working on, we wanted to revise it to make sure that it clearly reflected the role that we wanted, and I, I haven't, they're almost done, we were going to post them this week.
No, just one of them.
I just think that that, you know, we have a, we have a pretty large city, and we have a lot of people in need, a lot of really vulnerable populations, and I, I agree with Councilman Keys, I would hate to cut out a whole segment of the population from having that opportunity to access resources.
Yeah, I agree with that, these are, these are critical roles, I think it is a bit tragic that they've been vacant for over half the year, and that's something we need to absolutely prioritize, but folks are already having a difficult time accessing information and government services, and so cutting that, I, I can't get behind.
Any more discussion?
Call for the question.
I'll call for the vote, I'm the first.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Brzezinski's the second.
I'm not really sure what line item or page that was.
That is page 21, and we'll say the Community Affairs Officer, but it really just leaves so that there's two positions that are the same, and it's the administration room to fill one of them.
So are we going line by line during this communication, or...
Yeah, we could go line through, anywhere you see cuts, you could, you could recommend it.
We voted on this first, though?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a vote, we have a first, a second, call for the vote.
Okay, what are we voting on?
One of, one of the communications positions for Community Liaison. So we have an Immigration, and we have a Community Affairs Officer, we have two positions doing this, they've both been vacant for a significant amount of time, we've added additional resources for Communications Manager, Social Media, the, the general office has grown, and this would be reining it back in.
I would love to see an officer hired to deal with the people who are there paying their taxes, doing their things, and barely making it every month, people need help fixing their house up, and don't know how to do it.
Renee, you have something you'd like to say?
I, I'm just wondering, I mean, are you just trying to cut another $65,000, or you're, you're actually, because I mean, we can...
Yeah, that's 80,000.
We can work on looking for other cuts tomorrow, but I think cutting community outreach is, would, would really hurt residents.
Agreed, and I think, I think the target population, like what you're saying, I'd agree, like, we need to focus on folks who are low-income, who are struggling, and I think these two roles capture that in a lot of ways, it's our immigrants and our refugees, our new Americans, and then also generally Community Affairs, the last person in that role really built strong ties, especially with our Black and Brown community members, and so I think, instead of it saying, low-income, tax-paying liaison, in a lot of ways, these two roles are essentially doing that.
At the end of the day, 90% of our budget's personnel, so those are the areas that we're going to have to rein in at some point. Taking vacant positions in offices that have grown a lot in the last six years, I think would be the most prudent way to try to rein in any expenses.
There's only been one position added there, though, I don't know what you mean by grown a lot.
Six years ago, there was four people between the mayor's office, and now there's, what are we at, nine or 10?
10.
10, thank you. Between the mayor's office and now Communications Office, the mayor's office grew enough where it then split into two offices, so we went from four to now it's grown up to 10, and split and multiplied, that's, that's where we're at, so I'm looking to rein that back in a little bit.
But we had all, I don't, are you counting, are you counting IT and print shop and...
No, 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 that's, those are in the Finance Administration, that's...
Okay, I, I...
Both of these roles personally the same kind of, what are they, what's a different type of roles?
They, they liaise with different members in the community, to get staff, the staff get services, resources out, they're going to be working with Love Your Block on reaching more residents, to provide resources, helping with applications for resources from the Redevelopment Authority for Housing Rehab. We have, you know, when we, when we put on Celebrate Erie, we want to make sure that we have diverse vendors, musicians, and a good way to do that is to have our community liaisons doing outreach to help us get more involvement that way. There are so many ways that those community liaisons can help with getting information out, we've put ARP funding into economic and community development programs, so that city residents have access to free training, free resources, free services, but a lot of them don't know about it, so we want to be able to hold forums, we want to help people access those resources, and without people to do that, it's, it's impossible.
Who's been doing it for the last seven months that these positions have been empty?
It hasn't been done, and that's the whole point, you know, it's...
This positions sound markedly different than the positions that the last people held, and so if you could kind of go in that, or explain how this has evolved?
I think that, you know, there's, they, they were doing some of that, a lot of that was being shared through the groups that they were running, the one has the New American Council, there's also the Strengthening Police Communications Council, the Historical Police Black Affiliated Council, they would share information to those groups, and those groups would share information out, which is one way to get information out, but we also want to be a little bit more proactive to make sure that we're doing that grassroots outreach and getting the word out to residents about the resources that are available, actually helping them to apply, going door-to-door. We just think that that more intensive effort will help us to get resources in the hands of people who need it the most. And, you know, from our involvement with Bloomberg philanthropies over the past year, we were looking at success stories and best practices in other communities, and there, I mean, there are communities that have whole offices of civic engagement, with staff of six people, that go door-to-door regularly, to, to let people know about services and resources, and to help them with stuff like this, and we didn't have anything like that. So we just really need, you know, as we, as we've been here from year to year, we see what the needs are, we learn more every year, and we're trying to improve on what we've done so far.
So, first of all, I would like to say that, you know, the mayor has made an effort in order to engage the population, and so I'm, I'm happy to see that there is a switch or a change into what the job will be, but, you know, everything's from the top down, you know, we have departments that definitely could use a communications department, if we're going to have a full-time, I was just talking to somebody the other day, if we're like, have, going to have a full-time Communications Director, you know, our certain department heads and stuff, should be all... our certain department heads and stuff, which should be all being deferred to the communications director. I don't think our communications director, just handling the administration's communication, is a full, well-rounded job. You know, our police could use a spokesperson. Usually, our police chief i- isn't out there m- making statements for obvious reasons for that matter. If there's something with the fire department or whatever, and so, I think that, that, yes, communication is key. And two, we need more of it, but three, you know, we need to find a way to expand the communications we're doing and give more mileage out to the people that we have.
Yeah, and you're, you're correct. The communications does work with all the other departments as well. Uh, when there's an issue that comes up, um, it's kind of all hands on deck. We all work together as a team on the messaging and making sure that we get out the, um, appropriate information to the residents. Um, so, you know, it's just, it takes time to fill positions and onboard people, and then, um, you know, sometimes it doesn't work out and you have to start over again. It's just kind of a current reality right now, but we're moving as fast as we can.
Well, I'll still, I mean, I think that, was that for full enough discussion? Um, we'll see where the vote lies.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, I made the motion to cut, uh, one of those two positions from the office communications. I don't care which title it is, to be honest. Um, so, one of those forty-five thousand dollar positions, the benefits on it add up to another twenty-four thousand and forty-eight dollars. The total cut would be seventy-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars from the communications, um, office. Alright, uh, I'm the primary, Rosinski's the second, call for the vote.
Could you just give me the total amount of the?
Seventy-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. So, yes would be to make the cut, and we would need four yes votes to have that cut occur.
Renee, can you get us copies of those descriptions for both jobs? The new descriptions, please?
Yes.
Alright, alright.
Okay, a motion by Council President Nelson, seconded by Council Member Rosinski, that page twenty-one in the Office of Communications, the Communications Affairs Officer position being eliminated, totaling the amount of seventy-nine thousand, forty-eight dollars. Mr. Rosinski?
Yes.
Faulkner?
No.
Flores?
No.
Keys?
No.
Tru?
No.
Witherspoon?
No.
Nelson?
Yes. Alright.
Motion fails to pass, yace two, mayes five.
Yeah, all of us, please.
Alright, do we have any other cuts from the general fund? Yes.
That hundred thousand for the housing study?
Yes.
You were right. It was in the, uh, general government budget.
Thank you.
Can we amend that?
Yes.
What page?
I had page twenty-two.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Page sixty-nine, did you say?
Sixty. You know, I deleted my note after I was told that I was wrong.
It's, um, it's matched for grants, different other grants that we're getting.
I thought it was, I thought it was on page sixty-two and.
Professional Services?
Yes.
In what, in the general government?
General Government, yes.
So, do we have to back out the one-twenty that we already, or the sixty that we already took out of the other one?
Just move it to, just change the number.
Change it to page sixty-two.
Just change the number.
Uh, yes, still forty, forty-one, but page sixty-two, general government.
Okay, that would be a motion by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by President Nelson, to amend the general government line item from page twenty-two to sixty-two. It's still in the amount of seventy-nine thousand.
I thought there was fifty-eight.
A reduction of fifty.
Fifty thousand, fifty.
Yeah, she wanted to leave seventy thousand.
So, now it's just a reduction of fifty from an amount of.
Different one.
Yeah, the amount, the current budget amount is one million, two-hundred, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And that'll drop by fifty thousand. So, one million, one-hundred, seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Voting on the amendment, Rosinski, Faulkner?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Keys?
Yes.
Tru? Witherspoon? President Nelson?
Yes.
Yace seven, mayes zero.
At least it was still general funds.
Is there any other cuts that anyone's proposing? I do, I do wanna say, I, we talked to this solicitor, Jasmine and I, this past Wednesday. And, uh, we had a conversation about the raises that occur mid-year. Um, you know, the, the most recent, um, changes of status, you know, there's the, the different automatic spots that go up, and then, you know, so there's, um, so I appreciate that we voted on leases and that wrap-up, um, because the, the changes that have been happening mid-year, I, I think leave, um, a lot of animosity with some of the staff. I mean, that's where, that's where we're hearing that complaint from. Um, and, and it takes council out of that process. So, I don't, I'm not gonna propose any other, uh, changes to any of that, but there's some by ordinance, not directors, there's some, there's some spots that have, I think escalated, and that's particularly the Personnel Office that, that have escalated up to director level pays where the ordinances don't reflect that. And I'd like to see that shift back towards reflecting the ordinances moving forward. Um, do you understand what I'm saying on that? Not to be, I'm not trying to be condescending on that, but do you, alright. So, the ordinances, the, the whole, the whole, I'm sorry, the whole, the whole administrative code. It's, you know, one-fourteen, one-fifteen, one-seventeen. It lays out the organization chart for the city. It determines what are departments, what are not departments, what are offices, what are bureaus, what are directors, what are assistant directors and managers. That's not currently reflected in a couple of our practices. Uh, it's not reflected in a couple pages of our budget. Um, I would like to see that reflected until council changes any ordinances, and that's what we talked about last time, is, well, then we should change the ordinance. Well, then we should change the ordinance, but that's still a vote until the practices, the practices should change after the ordinances change. And some of that's not reflected in the budget. I would like to see those numbers get reined in, uh, in the future. Uh, maybe some of these raises that have happened, and specifically, I'm talking about, you know, a thirteen percent increase in a position, whereas other comparable, middle-management type-level positions have seen much lower raises than that. I would just like to see those raises maybe not continue until those, until that director position, that's not a director by ordinance, gets caught up to by our deputy solicitor, until it gets caught up to by our chief IT, until it gets caught up to all of the other positions.
My, 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 my understanding is that the mayor, um, has some authority to decide who's in his cabinet
Yeah.
and how those people are paid. Um, but I can talk to the solicitor about what he.
The cabinet ones, that's why we adjusted the, um, that, that's, it's set by ordinance, too. Uh, because that's why we adjusted the police chief one, because the cabinet has a director of public safety. And then, and within the absence of that, then the mayor steps down into that role, but we changed that back in June so that the police chief and fire chief of those bureaus stepped up into that role. That's set by ordinance as well, and this is.
But not everything's in the ordinance, not every position's in the ordinance.
Correct. The directors, offices, those things are, um, you know. And there's some spots that are, you know, we made a computer office, and, and we put it in the mayor's office, and I read the ordinance from the nineteen eighties because we used to contract that out, and so, we put it into the mayor's office, and then we shifted it over to finance and administration. And, and we left, it's redundant. We have it still in the mayor's office and in finance and administration.
Okay.
It's, it's a quirky little redundancy. I should fix that. I fixed a lot of stuff this year. I didn't fix that one yet. Um, so.
I mean, there are certain things that may be in an ordinance that don't reflect the way we're operating because it doesn't make sense anymore. So, I guess I would just ask you to take that into consideration. Things change, needs change.
I would like to make those changes before the practice changes, because this, this old thing with the charter, uh, chapter four-eleven, four-seventeen, four-eight, here in the budget, four-eleven's the mayor's responsibilities. The responsibility is to execute the charter and ordinances of the city. If the, if the organization of the city is set by ordinance, that's supposed to be executed. If it's not being executed, it's being changed in a way, that's fine, let us know. We'll discuss and vote on it, as we did with the police chief and fire chief issue. There was other stuff in that ordinance that we struck out and decided not to move forward with, but it's still being moved forward with. That's an issue. And I like it reflected in the budget, moving forward with some of these spots. I'm not gonna sit here and, I, I have the numbers as to what I would suggest as far as not giving raises or not giving two-and-a-half percent until it catches up, but, uh, but I'm not gonna do that this year. I, I, I would like to see that get reined in moving forward. Does that make it clear? And that's just mine. I mean, I'm not putting it up to a vote. Okay.
I have a question. So, uh, certain, certain positions are set by ordinance, and some certain are also set by the administration. Of course, voted on by council. So, uh, with all things being equal, do you think it's prudent that we, uh, while we don't have complete control of it, set a set wage for a director or for, uh, you know what I mean, or for an assistant director, um, and put them all at the same wage? Um, going, obviously, you know, not reducing anybody's wages, but, uh, in a staggered way to make it like in the future where if I'm assistant director at the city, I make so much money even if I'm in this department or that department or the next department.
I mean, you, you bring a, a good point. It's something that we've been, you know, considering for the last several years because, you know, it's really difficult, you know, when you take into account how long somebody's been in a position, their qualifications, their experience, how many people they manage, how many unions they, they manage, how many different enterprise funds or bureaus they manage, and how do you account for all that? And the city's never, to my knowledge, had a comprehensive pay scale analysis done. And that was a recommendation that came out of both the SCP, um, Strategic Consulting Partners DEI report and also, um, Jim Fiorenzo's recommendations when he did an HR audit, is that we really, we don't have pay scales. We don't have for, for the non-bargaining and management positions. And so, it's really difficult when a position comes open to figure out what that salary should be, but also how comparable we are to other municipalities our size. And so, in the near future, I'm hoping that we can get that analysis done, and I think that will help greatly um, with setting up those pay scales so we can figure out what's, what's equitable, um.
Are we talking time studies?
Um, no, not as much time studies, uh, well, I mean, it's more responsibilities, qualifications, co- comparability to other cities our size for the same sorts of responsibilities.
He's gonna keep you up all night.
So, hopefully these studies help, give us a, a baseline analysis on where we should be compared to other places.
It's sometimes we feel like we're flying blind, you know? And then what do you, you know, what do you do if somebody goes and gets an additional certification or a master's degree? Like, we need to have those steps, those policies and procedures in place so that it's just, we alert you, you know, so-and-so earned a master's degree or some, so-and-so got their certification, they're gonna be bumped up. We wanna make sure you, you knew that, but it's just.
Yeah.
It'll, I think we will improve.
They did that originally in education because educators were paid very poorly. Today, it's not that way anymore, but, yeah, you should get awarded, that's why I mentioned about the, the police department getting, uh, mental health training.
Yes.
Get that certificate. I'd give them extra money for that if they're in a car and they have that ability to be a mental health specialist as well as, if policeman, that's, that's big.
Alright, is there anything else from the general funds? Enterprise funds, do you have any suggestion anywhere that you're looking that you?
I just get people mad, you know, maybe.
I like your honesty.
I know where the money is. Take the money out of the risk management fund and let my poor people get a fee increase that's not there this year, that's all. But I'm not gonna fight the world with, you know, I'll take it on the forehead if my people tell me I'm a failure. But I did stop Green Garden for at least a couple of months.
Uh, can I just, I'll, I'll, I wanna answer a little bit, too. So, you know, when we do a property tax increase, it affects only the, the property owners, right, the residents.
Right.
So, you know, we've been able to hold the current mileage for five years straight now. But as expenses go up in refuse and sewer, we need those enterprise funds to be self-sustaining. The, the city residents, if they subsidize that, if we were to make cuts in the general fund to cover the fees, okay? So, we have about thirty-four thousand residents that are paying property taxes. But in, say, for instance, the sewer fund, it's a fee that's associated with use, usage. So, we have businesses, commercial, industrial, nonprofits, a lot of different pay, people pay that increased sewer rate. So, if we make cuts in the general fund to subsidize that increased fee, that means the city residents are shouldering the entire burden instead of spreading it out, instead of spreading it out over.
The poorest people are getting the biggest shot inside of the head.
But it's less for them to do it this way than to increase taxes and then subsidize those enterprise funds.
I'm gonna hold you to that tomorrow. You can say that again.
I promise.
I, I'll tell you, I do, with that in mind, because I see what you're, I see what you're doing there, is that the, the nonprofits are not their, the, the tax-exempt entities are not fee-exempt.
Right.
But garbage is a spot where, where the ta- the tax-exempt organizations aren't getting refuse.
Right.
So, we've always done that, you know, there was always that transfer, and, uh, when the transfer came out of sewer, I didn't really mind it. I understood what that was doing, and I didn't mind it, but the one that came out of refuse, so I appreciate that last year it was cut out of refuse and it was left in sewer. And I was like, oh, I kinda like what you're doing there. Um, in, in future budgets and so, like, like, helping refuse is really the spot. Um, and even if there was, you know, you were saying this is why we don't transfer into enterprise funds. On, on refuse, that would be the opposite. It would be just directly to residents.
It would be.
I'm not sure how that gets legally justified. We might run into some issues doing it that way.
Because if we continue to subsidize that and we're not covering our costs, we're gonna get, run into problems down the road.
Yeah, but I wouldn't even mind an ongoing annual transfer from operating expense into refuse because that's just hitting residents. Is, is, you know, as you were describing the difference with sewer, it's the opposite with refuse. But. Go ahead, yeah.
You're probably, you're probably gonna hate this job.
Go for it, man.
So, uh, with, with that in mind, um, we could go with a budget wash and offset the refuse fees? How much would that change the, or would that mitigate the, the change in the fee?
Seven hundred grand.
It's seven, yeah, seven hundred thousand. We can't, we can't stretch that as a transfer. And then it would just be a matter if that was an ongoing thing, because the thing is, if you make that kinda shift, I would wanna see it happen every year.
And at some point, you'd have to start increasing property taxes to cover the refuse.
The nonprofits don't pay property tax, but they pay fees, which is why we're trying to go this fee route so that everybody's paying their fair share.
But that's, that's what I'm specifically mentioning.
They don't pay refuse either. They just pay sewer and stormwater.
Why do they not pay refuse?
Because they don't get garbage.
Refuse is residential only.
It's just residential. So, commercial prop, so commercial taxes would go to offset residents on refuse. See how that would be, it would be a way of. I don't, you know, if it was an ongoing transfer, I wouldn't mind that transfer going the reverse way as to what we have been doing, but for refuse, I would. But I feel a little, I'm not sure about saying this on live stream, though. Maybe I should just shut up and wait till we're. Before I get some commercial properties coming in.
It's just a question to throw, throw out there, and I understand that it's something that cannot be, be ongoing, so.
I think what, you know, what we were looking at is the more that we could save this year from the general fund, the more we could bank for next year to help with the structural deficit.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, we're, we've been combating that every year since twenty-eighteen, and we're making progress, but it takes time. You can't get it, you can't make it all up in one or two or three years.
We've got one-point-one million left to subsidize next year with.
Yeah.
Out of that, um.
Prepayment of the.
Prepayment of the water lease.
Well, now we should be up to about one-point-eight, though.
Right, so, that's still not enough to cover.
Yeah. Yeah.
Twenty twenty-five.
Six million, that one behind.
I, I almost forgot a big thing. What, Emergicare? You know, with all the stuff we're talking about now, do we have, if it's not in general funds, I, we, you talked about with the air, with the airplane thing, that you think you have some money in a different fund to help airplane. Do we have anything to help Emergicare right now?
Um...
And, and I'm remembering back to the, the CBDG.
We have CDBG open right now, I had talked to them about that in the past, and they were going to apply.
Yeah, they did that last year, they did the presentation, they brought the stuff up. They asked for like three hundred thousand for new stretchers or something like that.
Yeah.
Is there anything?
So that's, that's an option. You know, I, I know that we're, the city's characterized as being free riders, but as you can all see from the budget sessions we just went through, we spend a lot of money on emergency response. And, you know, you're on our calls on Tuesday mornings, the vast majority of calls that fire go on are EMS calls. And so, you know, while we're not directly funding Emergicare, we're spending a lot of city funding on emergency response, and I just think we're going to need more time to think through how we can help to support them, but CDBG applications are open, and that's definitely an avenue.
Okay, last year, they were specifically told no to CBDG. I mean, I, I was in the meeting, and it was, it was a, it was a mismatch, I remember the presentation.
For what they were applying for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think there's room there this year?
I think for different application.
Okay. I would love, that's, that's a, I think we've been seeing the need, and we've been well-informed on the need to make that a big priority. If we can't do it, if we're not doing it in general fund, I really want to make sure that it's addressed somewhere.
What is on our minds, too?
What's the due date for CDBG this year?
It is, I want to say January thirtieth, or it's the end of the month, maybe the last Friday in the month.
Considering I'll have a little bit of extra time in January, if you, me, and Dave want to sit down, I've gone through that process of applying for CDBG, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
What do they need help in?
So they, the, the presentation they gave to, to our CBDG, when that, they brought in their stretchers, which they've been cannibalizing them, so, you know, for everything you're worried about with public safety, and, you know, the most likely way of, of, of you dying probably isn't a cop, it's, or, you know, like a, it's, it's a, probably a heart attack at this stage, right? I mean, like, like, and the same thing for me, I mean, like, statistically, most likely way for me to die is an accident, and, you know, that's the stuff EMS is responding to. Their, uh, their chairs are like thirty-fourth, I'm ballparking the numbers, so if I'm being recorded right now, and I realize I'm going to get my numbers wrong, but I think their chair, the, the lifts were like thirty-four thousand, I remember them being like a pretty decent car. But for them to lift all this stuff up, and to lift the people up, and to make sure that they, and they've been cannibalizing those to the point that they no longer can get the parts because they're so old, and they've been cannibalizing the broken chairs to make sure that they can get the parts, leaving them with very few resources on that. So they came and gave a CBDG, and I think they'd asked for like three hundred thousand to replace their lifts, their, and, and I'm not using the right word, the chairs, the strudges, stretchers.
Yeah.
Yeah. They don't, they don't get the resources, you know, their Medicare, Medicaid, we're, you know, a low-funded community, we don't have Cadillac coverage insurance for most of our residents, so they continue to run at this, this deficit, this, this struggle. And they continue to provide ALS services, advanced life-saving rather than basic life-saving, for the whole region, because that's just how the system works. So every time someone has a heart attack in northeast, it's eerie guys going out there, and then the, and then the Harbor Creek people complain that they come here for a stubbed toe, because we're busy out there with heart attacks.
Why don't the county step up? They're fighting over a library.
They've been trying to figure that out.
But there, there's some steps. I mean, in West County, they're collecting, they're working together with like five or six municipalities are now joining together so they can provide ALS.
Something the cog was supposed to do a thousand years ago.
They're working on it.
They are working on it.
But, but we still don't have the best equipment for our ambulances. They asked us for three hundred thousand, CBDG wasn't the right thing. I'm not saying the general funds are, but I'd love to find them money, uh, to an extent that, because we haven't given them money for anything for a long time, is the way it looks. And, uh, and I'm way more likely to need them to keep me alive than anything else in this town.
Are you a member?
Grants, yeah.
That's one way to help.
Looking to, uh, financial grants for them that we can't do.
I just wrote that down.
Does that...
Yeah.
Possibility?
I just wrote that down.
Yeah.
We're going to check with them.
But if, if we don't have anything, if, if we don't have anything by them for next year, I would love to see it in the budget. I mean, I, I think that's something that, you know, we're spending seventy million dollars on public safety, and, and I can't think of the most, you know, I've, I've called the police two or three times in my years of living here. I haven't called fire yet. I've called off fire, because they showed up at my church when I overcooked something. But ambulances, I, I call, I've, I've had to call them a couple times. Not for me, but for stuff.
I got to play Dill's advocate, but I'd like to make a cut. I want to cut the garbage fee.
Okay. Where would you like to see the cut?
Take it out of risk management if you want to. They got at least a million sitting there, we only need seven hundred thousand.
I'd rather see, I'd rather see it come out of operating in the cuts that we just made.
I hope we find it, I just want to give, throw a bone to the people is what I'm saying, if it's a, the garbage thing.
It'd be a tax raise next year. It'd be a tax raise next year.
Not if we make, with that cut, we put the money in that fund just like they paid it, but instead of the people paying it...
But it's not, it was not sustainable, because it won't be there next year, so then you still have to replace that next year.
Right.
Plus, we won't have...
But hopefully by then, we'll have more glass being taken out, and our tonnage would be lower.
I would like to see that.
I'm just trying to help, you know, hold me down.
I take mine.
But I'm, I'm, I'm going down with it. If I can get a second.
All right. Let's, uh, let's, let's just narrow it in for exactly what you'd go for. Let's, let's take a quarter million from general funds to put in, to transfer it into refuse? Does that sound like a reasonable thing for, for a motion?
As long as I can get that thing cut.
Does that cover it? Right.
That wouldn't offset the whole...
It wouldn't offset the whole thing, it would, uh, it brings it down to a four percent increase instead of a six percent.
If we have to raise it, we have to raise it.
What did you do with the money that you took away from the police? What's that doing?
No, that's what, that's, that's literally what I'm talking about doing. So, literally, we could take the police overtime, two hundred and fifty, it's two hundred and eighty if you want to do that, but, and put it towards the refuse.
We can piece it together, and I guess just throw them a bone at Christmas for basically, it's not a huge thing, but it's still, the people, again, we're worried about new positions, so we can help the new Americans come in here, which is a wonderful thing. But let's not forget the Americans that we have here. I never mentioned any names, we had a longtime council person here that tried to get his house fixed, and when he saw the fifteen-page thing that he had to fill out, he said, hey, listen, this, he said, you know, we need somebody out there helping our everyday people who built this city, that's something I'd like myself to...
All right, so just, just narrowed in, a quarter million dollar transfer from operating into refuse, does that sound like a reasonable thing for a bone to throw?
Go ahead.
Does that, does that sound like a...
It's two fifty, right?
Two hundred and fifty thousand. That would make the increase instead of six percent, about four percent. And I'm sure Lisa can finalize those numbers tomorrow if that was in there.
So...
Instead of two hundred and eighty-seven, that would put him at about two eighty-two?
Take five hundred grand from that risk management, then, there's your seven.
But that's a one-time revenue source, I get a little nervous about that.
I was going to say, in, in certain way, you know, ultimately raising the fee protects the pe, the people you're talking about, because most of them are homeowners, and one thing we happen to have to do is raise the tax rate, and if you see what we're getting at the county, and what we're getting at the school district, uh, we just, we just can't be everything, um, you know, and so I'm proud that we've held the line on property taxes.
So...
Uh, the other two are actually fee-based services, and nobody runs a business at a deficit and keeps a business.
So... So the proposal that I would, that I'm trying to narrow in on you, that would be increasing a line item in the budget, so that would take a supermajority? It would be a quarter million dollar transfer from operating into refuse?
Now, if we do that, we have to put that quarter million back next year, plus an additional, uh, three dollars and forty cents per quarter per household, so...
So that's going to be a bigger shock on folks.
So it's going to be a bigger increase next year.
Yeah. For a five-dollar grant.
All right. Unless we keep making that transfer every year, that would be the other spot. And then there'd be a tax increase.
Then we're, yeah, looking at a property tax increase.
We're going to get that anyway, with six million in the hole next year.
Does that sound, is that sound like how you would like, is that a reason?
I'd like to help the people one way or another.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Okay. It would take five votes, because it would increase a line item in the general. Can I call for the vote?
I need a second.
Oh, sorry, I'm the second on Ed's.
Okay, so we're taking a motion by Councilmember Rosinsky, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, to take two hundred and fifty thousand from the operating general fund budget and transfer it to refuse.
So that would be an operating transfer from the general fund, and it would be...
To refuse, yeah.
The same in refuse.
All right. All right.
Uh, on the vote, Mr. Rosinsky.
Yes?
Faulkner.
No.
Flores.
No.
Keys.
No.
Tru.
No.
Witherspoon.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes. Motion fails.
You people have to run again, I don't remember that.
That's in two years.
All right.
Five dollars per household.
Any other things to talk about? All right. I'll make a motion to adjourn then. Is that how we do that?
Second.
One more, one more thing, I guess it's, I guess I'm a little late on this, but for people who, that, you know, we have a lot of vehicles we put in the budget that were pending grants, and so I'm asking you, don't authorize money to be spent on vehicles until we know whether we're going to get grants or not, and that will be several hundred thousand dollars we can back out at the end of, uh, next year if we actually get those grants, and make sure that we capture that money and move it.
Well, that will be in the capital budget, and that money will still be in the capital budget at the end of the year for next year's budget, so we can reallocate it.
Okay.
That's all. On each other.
All right. Meeting adjourned?
Yep. I second the motion.